We will call the December meeting of the Wood County Board of Supervisors to order. I see that, I did see it in the middle, but now the screen's down because the clerk had taken the role.
Yes.
He has.
Oh, he didn't.
And at this point, we will call on Supervisor Boye. Bill, if you would come forward for the invitation, I'd ask the body to rise and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I have a short prayer for you today. Lord, who enlightens, we ask for your supernatural wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that has been gathered. May those sharing information give us pertinent points so we all clearly understand. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions. Help us to wisely evaluate our options, considering the pros and cons. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decisions and to effectively carry them out. Amen. I have a brief thing to read to you. It's called the Public Service Leadership. Many of you have heard it in the past, in fact, I just ran across it the other day. The paper is so old and yellow, but it's relevant to everyone today. If I express myself on a subject, I'm trying to run things. If I'm silent, I'm dumb or have lost interest. If I'm always at my office, why don't I get out and learn what's going on? If I'm out when they call, why am I not tending to business? If I'm not at home at night, I'm out parasailing. If I'm home, I'm neglecting important outside contacts and activities. If I don't agree with persons, I'm bullheaded. If I do agree, I don't have any ideas of my own. If I don't do what I'm requested, I'm a darn poor official. If I do agree, well, that's what I'm paying for. If I give someone a short answer, I'm too big for my britches. If I attempt to explain the pros and cons of an issue, I'm a know-it-all and long-winded. If I'm well dressed, I think I'm a big shot. If I'm not, I'm a poor representative of my office. If I'm on the job a short time, I'm inexperienced. If I've been there a long time, it's time for a change. I assure that with you.
All right, please join in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Boye, and welcome everybody. First order of business is the, it was the minutes of the previous session. I have a motion by Hamilton for to approve. A minute second by Lightnum. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion? Is there a favor of approval? Please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. Today, without objection, I'd like to take the resignations and appointments together. Is there any objection to that? All right, so today we have the resignations, Joe Baylen as a producer member of the seat committee, and Mary Jo Wheeler from the Health and Human Services Committee. And for appointments and reappointments to the Ethics Committee to a three-year term the other year, and to the Civil Service Commission to a five-year term, Gus Mancuso. I entertain the motion. Supervisor Zerku on the motion, Supervisor Buckey on the second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries unanimously. Moving forward, public comment. Do we have any public comment today? Any public comment? Okay, seeing none. Moving forward, we have acknowledgements and recognitions for long-term employees. And we have one today for, from Norwood. Liz, I'm going to call on you to come forward, and please handle that for us. Director of employee, please.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Liz Massons. I'm the Director of Nursing at Norwood Health Center. I'm here today to celebrate one of my employees, Lori Luther. Sorry. Lori has worked 25 years at Wood County. That's longer than some of my staff have been alive on this earth. Lori was hired at Wood County on September 27th, 1999, to work at the group home at the time that Wood County ran as a tech. From there, she took a position on the stepping stones unit, taking care of the DD clients. She worked on that unit until November 15th of 2007, when she took a position as a psych tech on the admissions hospital on patient unit. When the rehab unit opened, she took a job there from tech, as a tech, in 7/13/2008, then moved back to the DD's unit in October of 2008. She worked stepping stones until she finally took a position on the hospital unit. While she was a tech on that unit, and on her time off, she took online courses to become a medical assistant and received her certification as a medical assistant. And when the previous one retired, when I was the DON, Lori applied for and was hired as our medical assistant. Lori is the kind of employee most employers dream of. She is hardworking and devoted and passionate about her job and the patients we care for. Lori is always looking for ways to improve the patient care and experience. She is a strong advocate for our patients in the community and at the facility. Lori also manages to coordinate all the medical care for the residents and handles all our supply ordering and stocking for the entire building. During COVID, Lori's talent in acquiring supplies was put to the test. I don't know how we would have managed without her through those early months and years of COVID, without her tenacity for finding stock of the much-needed dwindling supplies and her endless help with testing, monitoring, tracking illness of staff, troubleshooting outbreaks with me and the staff, and attending to issues of the patients. With Lori's help, we made it through COVID and the pandemic and amazingly suffered no losses in our facility, either staff or residents. She was organized and on top of things even when the chaos was going on all around us. Lori works closely with all the doctors at the facility and in the community that come to the building and has a wonderful rapport and relationship with them, which results directly in our residents receiving the best care possible. She is a fierce advocate for our patients and makes sure that they get the care they deserve and the respect that are needed from the medical community. I'm so very pleased Lori has stuck it out with all those years. And trust me, I hope I retire before Lori does, so I don't have to know what it's like to work without her. Thank you, Lori, for your care and service you have provided the residents in Norwood in far all these years of experience. Sorry.
Don't go away, Lori.
Oh, Lori! Now you have to come up here. Thank God.
And some people just want to get away from the microphone.
Me included. Liz, there's your certificate. Oh.
Lori, do you want to say anything?
No.
No?
Not really.
Okay. On behalf of the great county. We appreciate your service. And, you know, while I'm doing a little bit of acknowledgement and recognition, we have a number of former county board supervisors in the back. They're supervisors, LaFante, Fire, and Henkow, who are all long-term servants, members of this county board, welcome as well to the meeting. All right, as we move along, we've got a big day today. Obviously, we have a ribbon cutting at the jail, and we have a fairly large packet here to deal with today. So as we get into that, on page five is the referrals that went to Planning and Zoning as well as the Seat Committee. That came from North Central Regional Planning. And then as we move forward, page six in your packet is Minutes of the Annual Account and Budget Hearing that occurred on Tuesday, November 12th. And then the Minutes of the Operations Committee from December 3rd on pages seven through nine, seven through nine. We have the Art by Ad-Hoc Committee meeting on 10 and 11, on pages 10 and 11. And then we go to the monthly update from the Office of the County Clerk at Minor on pages 12, 13, and 14. I like the picture on the front there, too, Trent. It's changed a little bit. We have the monthly update from Human Resources Department beginning on 15, and it runs through page 19. Page 15 to page 19. And then we have the monthly letter of comments from the Treasurer on page 20, Employee Wellness on 21. And then we have a rather large packet of information here. The Wood County 2024 Health Assessment Results. That goes pages 22 through 50, 22 to 50. Anybody have any questions on any of that? All right, we have eight budget resolutions that we're dealing with today. These are all just adjustments, you know, what's just in our funding. Is there any objection to us taking these eight resolutions together? No? I would ask the clerk to please read the resolutions.
And we'll start out with Resolution 24-12-1, to amend the 2024 budget for Health Department for the purpose of dispersing funds for the approved opioid remediation and opioid settlement funds. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unspent opioid settlement funds. The adjustment to the budget totals $550,000. Resolution 24-12-2, to amend the 2024 WIC budget for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $20,000. Resolution 24-12-3, to amend the 2024 Consolidated Contract Budget for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $7,000. Resolution 24-12-4, to amend the 2024 Healthy Smiles Budget for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $20,000. Resolution 24-12-5, to amend the 2024 Adams-Juno Budget for the purpose of funding higher-than-anticipated expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The adjustment to the budget totals $7,000. Resolution 24-12-6, to seek county board approval to amend the 2024 Wood County Multi-Discharge Variance Budget for unanticipated point source permitting payments and to appropriate those monies to the MDB budget expenditures. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unanticipated revenue from MDB point source permisses in the form of 2024 MDB payments. It totals $24,392.41. Resolution 24-12-7, to amend the 2024 budget of various highway functions listed below for additional expenditures of $2,704,040 not anticipated during the original budget process. Fiscal note, no additional cost to Wood County. No additional cost to Wood County. Resolution 24-12-8, to amend the 2025 budgets of the functions listed below for the projects that were approved with the American Rescue Plan Act, Art of Funding. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. The source of the funding is unspent American Rescue Plan Act funding. Adjustment to the budget totals $3,023,851.
Heard the reading of those eight resolutions. I have a motion by Brey, a second by Hamilton. I'm not going to ask you to repeat those. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please signify by aye.
Or we can move to the board.
Oh, yeah, let's try that since we're spending several million dollars. And that resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving forward, your packet, page 60, begins the Minutes of the Health and Human Services Committee Meeting of November 21st. That's 60, 61, and 62. Then we have North Central Community Action Minutes on 63 and 64. Update from the Health Department begins on 65 and runs through page 71, 65 to 71. And then from the Human Services Department, their monthly letter of comments, 72 to 78, pages 72 to 78. We have the County Veteran Service Officers Report, CBSO, on 79 and 80. And then that brings us to page 81 and the next resolution in your packet.
This will be Resolution 24-12-9, to create a .97 FTE Economic Support Worker Position. Fiscal note, anticipated wages and benefits based upon a grade F, Step 1, totals $72,761.36.
I have a motion by Clendenning, a second by Hamilton. Discussion? Any discussion? All right, please vote. Resolution passes unanimously. Moving forward in the packet, page 82, a second resolution brought forth by the Human Services.
This will be Resolution 24-12-10, to create a 1.0 FTE Assistant Administrator Position. Fiscal note, anticipated wages and benefits based upon a grade double M, Step 1, is $121,884.97.
A motion by Buckey, and a second by Brey. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, please vote. Thank you. All right, as we move forward in the back, at the Public Safety Committee Meeting of November 11, begins on 83 and 84. The Public Safety Committee Minutes from November 12 on 85. And then same committee, their minutes from December 9 on 86 and 87. We have the Traffic Safety Commission Meeting on 88 and 89. And then we have the monthly update from the Sheriff's Department begins on page 90 and runs through 112, 90 to 112. And as we move forward, page 113 in your packet is a resolution brought forth by the Public Safety.
This will be Resolution 24-12-11, to approve a new contract with Southwood County Humane Society so as to allocate excess dog license fee funds in exchange for receipt of services. Fiscal note, the fiscal impact of the contract is the allocation of approximately $12,500 in excess dog license fund fees to Southwood County Humane Society commencing in 2025 instead of the $2,500 that was paid to it in the past. The loss revenues will likely come from the 2025 surpluses in the Sheriff's Department budget or from the general fund, but no transfer of funds is needed at this time.
Motion by Zerku, second by Lightnum. Any discussion? Any discussion? All right, let's go to the board and vote. That resolution passes 19-0. Thank you. All right, as we move forward, page 117 begins the Minutes of the Seat Committee from November 6th, that runs 117 to 120. We have Minutes from Seed from December 4th, 121, 122, and 123. And then we have various Golden Sands Resources Conservation Development Council Minutes on 124 to 132. 124 to 132. We have the North Central Wisconsin Tures and Partnership. You saw that as ITPAC before, there was a name change there, that's 133 and 134. And that is their minutes from September. And then you have their minutes from October on 135 and 136. And the minutes from November, 137 and 138. Extensions Monthly Comments begin on 139 and 1 through 142. And then we have Land and Water Conservation Department, their comments begin on 143 and 1 through 148. That's why I have two months in here of everything. Looking back on, I don't have two of these. That was October, this is November, and that's 149 to 155. Land and Water, again, their monthly update on 149 to 155. And then we have Planning and Zoning, 156 to 160. 156 to 160. Bringing us to another resolution in the packet brought forth by the Seat Committee on 161.
This will be Resolution 24-12-12, to seek county board approval for the 2025 to 2034 Wood County Land and Water Resource Management Plan Revision to address rural and urban sources of non-point pollution. Fiscal note, no cost to Wood County. To implement the plan, to implement plan would require no new staff or other costs.
And Lightnum on the motion, Clendenning on the second. Is there any discussion? Bill, I'm just gonna, I got too many bills right now. Bill Lightnum, you want to just make a real quick comment? Bill, this was a really big effort.
Yes, it was, and I think the credit was to Shane Mukerfening, who's sitting behind me right now. There was at least four months where Shane worked on this from early summer through September, even in October. He had staff meetings a couple of times during those months with all the help that he needed, over a hundred-page document. Shane and I went down to Madison in the first week of December after getting which day it was, appeared to put the Land and Water Resources Board as approved unanimously there. Shane made excellent presentation. Our committees stood wholeheartedly behind that document. It's to prepare our work in land and water conservation for the next 10 years.
Thank you, Bill. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right, please go. The board vote. Resolution passes 19-0. All right, moving forward, page 162, the Judicial and Legislative Committee from December 2nd. Their minutes from December 6th on 163, 4, and 5. The Criminal Justice Task Force Minutes on 166 and 167, and that is from September. And then we have the December update from the Child Support Agency on 168. We have the Clerk of Courts on 169. Clerk of Counsel's monthly update on 170. Register and Probate, 171. Register deeds, 172. And that brings us to another resolution in the packet on page 173, brought forth by the Judicial and Legislative Committee.
This will be Resolution 24-12-13, to approve Supervisor Clendenning to travel to Washington, DC from March 1st to the 4th, 2025, for the 2025 National Association of County Legislative Conference. Fiscal note, totals $2,949.
A motion by Zerku. A second by Hamilton. Any discussion? Any discussion? Supervisor Hamilton?
Well, if that's not enough money in the resolution, they're just going to dump them off the plane where we run out of money. So we're good.
Yeah, we don't want to pollute an area.
All right, we have digressed. Is there any further discussion pertinent to the resolution? All right, please vote. And that resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, moving forward, on page 174, the Minutes of the Highway Infrastructure Recreation Committee begins on 174, runs through 177. Their minutes from December 5th, 178 through 181. And we have comments from the Office of the Highway Commissioner, begins on 182 and runs through 188. We have the monthly update from the Park and Forestry Department, 189 to 196. And then there's a resolution that was in your packet. We had a committee meeting just prior to the county board meeting today. This resolution was referred back to committee, just kind of technically on some of the ways that this gets handled and some of the other opportunities we're looking at in the calendar as well. So that's the background on that. That is one back to committee, so it wasn't signed, not in your, ignore it, it's not in your packet. All right, moving forward, we have a resolution on 199, and supporting information goes through page 211, and that's the clerk.
This will be Resolution 24-12-14, to authorize the Park and Forestry Department to enter into a lease of property currently named Sarah Park from Consolidated Water Power Company. Also to authorize the department to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the purpose of outlining the responsibilities of the parties with respect to the potential future transfer of ownership of Sarah Park to Wood County. Fiscal note, annual rent for duration of the lease is $1.
Okay, I have a motion by Clendenning, and a second by, I've got a hand up, by Schultz. Trying to get everybody's name in the program somehow. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? All right, it asks you to please vote. Again, that resolution passes 19-0. As we move forward, page 212 in your packet, 212 and 213, minutes from the Property Information Technology Committee from December 2nd. And then we have the monthly update from IT, begins on 214 and runs through 219, 214 to 219. And then we have the monthly letter of comments from Ruben Van Tassel, our Facilities Manager, on 220. Junior Fair Board Minutes from September on 221 and 222. Minutes from the Central Wisconsin State Fair Board of Directors, 223, 24, and 25. Minutes from the South Central Library System Board of Trustees from, what was that one? From October 24th, at 226 and 227. And then from the Library Board on 228, 29, 30, 31, 32, Fairabout pages there, 228 to 232. Minutes of the University Commission on 233 and 234. And then minutes from the Jail Ad-Hoc Construction Committee, 235 and 236. Any questions on any of those that we just ran through, monthly letter of comments or anything that was in the packet? All right, and then the next resolution in the packet was Long-Term Employee Recognition. I ask the clerk to just please read that and then vote on that.
This will be Resolution 24-12-15, to recognize these Wood County employees for years of devoted and faithful service to Wood County.
Roser.
Yeah, I have a comment, too.
Well, you can't do that, so we have a motion.
I know, but I will.
All right, motion by Roser, second by Hamilton. Supervisor Roser.
Thank you. So I appreciate that. I really wasn't trying to make the motion, I just wanted to let you know I had a comment. So there were a lot of people on here who chose not to be recognized publicly, and I think that we just need to acknowledge them, even though they chose not to come before our esteemed board. And so I'm just encouraging people, if they know any of these people, or they run into any of these people, that they personally thank them since they chose not to come. And I know that the departments are going to do something within the department to honor them, but we as county board supervisors, if we know them, we also need to acknowledge them. Thank you, Mr. Kent.
Thanks, and that actually was their wish.
Right.
They do have recognition for that. So I do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that motion carries. We have one more resolution in the packet today. Before I read the, before we do the resolution, you know, this has been a really interesting year, because we're going to get through this, we're going to, it's kind of really been a dichotomy of tremendous success and then some sorrow. You see a picture out here of the last kind of supervisor that we just lost, Ed Wagner. You know, it's the time of year when, you know, you retrospectively look back at the year, and there's some introspection. We obviously had a lot of success and obviously a little bit of sorrow here. Ed Wagner was one of those people, I was talking to our county clerk before the meeting. There's a number of supervisors who have been members of this board over the years and who contribute at different levels, but I will say this, Ed Wagner's contribution was incredible. He was there every minute, and at his memorial services, I shared with his wife, I said he was somebody who was always prepared, he was always a gentleman, always willing to discuss every issue. Just one of those people that I think all of us relied on at different times, and broke the ice a little bit, I think, with, he had a kind of a strict way of doing things when he came to the board. And he actually said to me, first conversation, I called him up, as I usually do with board supervisors, you're welcome, and he said to me, he goes, "So, do you run these meetings by Robert Schulze, the board?" And I said, "Kind of." And he goes, "Well, what does that mean?" I said, "It means kind of. We try to run an orderly meeting. Hope you don't call me on that." But, you know, I think that broke the ice a little bit, and, you know, we had a supervisor, whether it be the Finance Department, and the work on the jail, which we're going to celebrate later, or anything that we did out of finance over the years, certainly had Ed's fingerprints all over it, all been prepared. You know, with that preface, Trent, I'm going to ask you to read that resolution. And I don't know what it says.
Oh, resolution.
Whatever part you want.
This will be Resolution 24-12-16, and this is relating to the life and public service of Edward G. Wagner.
That's it. Okay, I have a motion to that effect by Hamilton, and a second by Buckey. All in favor, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, and I'm going to ask this body to please rise in a moment of silence in And I thank you. You know, I'm not trying to run a really long county board meeting, but we have a ribbon cutting at a ladder. So is there anybody else who, a number of us attended that memorial service, Supervisor Wagner, is there anybody else? I made a couple of comments, I'd like to say anything. Okay, thank you. Again, Laura? Or Supervisor Buckey?
Tom, it's like, I served with Ed on the common council for many years, probably the most prepared individual. probably the most prepared individual I ever associated with on the council. He sat across from me in the city council and then low and behold, he sat next to me here. And that scared me a little bit. But got to know Ed and he did have a heart of gold and he really put his time and effort in on everything he did.
Thank you, Tom. All right, we've gone. Supervisor Lightman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I feel compelled to say that 10 years ago, Ed and I didn't get off on quite the right foot. I was really an environmentalist and I don't know if he quite understood that. But over the years, our service on various committees, most notably Judicial Legislative, we gained a respect for each other. And Ed called me, oh, for a few weeks before he passed. And I didn't realize that was gonna be the last conversation. So the news was hard on me. And as we just went through the meeting this morning, I couldn't help but look at his chair and just think, I hope he's watching over this, this meeting and this dedication today. Great, great man.
You know, like you said, Bill, when you look back, you know, retrospectively, and yet all of us come to this board typically with some difference in opinions. And the one thing we work on and that I'm so proud of in this county is the fact that we do work together to get things done. And I think that's reflective of the votes that you see on these boards, while most of that is done hashed out prior to, because we have meaningful discussion. And that's a great example, Bill, of how that works. Supervisor Buckey? See, now I'm violating Robert's Rules of Order. He'd be really mad because I didn't let everybody else talk once before.
One last thing, Ed. He never wanted to be recognized for his military service. I talked to his son at the funeral and he said he felt like he didn't deserve recognition because he was never in combat. And I said, "Well, he really should be recognized." And his son, as you know, Lance, did the service there. And he said, "I'm gonna, whether he liked it or not, he's gonna be recognized for his military service." And that was very nice.
Thanks, thank you, Tom. All right, as a housekeeping deal, how are we handling this logistically? You know, things have changed a little bit. So the people from the outside are coming in through the new entrance now through security. The courthouse is gonna be locked, you know, from the new jail into the courthouse. But how are we handling getting people here, over there? Are they going across eventually? Are they going out in the end? Sheriff, you wanna go to the, I'll just go to the microphone shot.
Thank you for putting me on the spot. I think everybody here, can you hear me? Can you hear me? From here, it can go through the third floor. Anybody from the public will come in through the new entrance. So you don't have to go outside and around. Ribbon cutting will be right in the new county boardroom. So it makes no sense. Whenever you're ready, you guys wanna go over there, you can go over there.
Okay, so save time and effort. Those of you who are in the building, do not have to exit. You'll be able to enter directly through the third floor. Thanks, do you have anything?
All right, there's a jury trial across the way, so be quiet. Don't interact with any jurors or say anything to those people. Anything else, Laura?
I'm killing some time here.
We were just gonna ask if we ever had it.
We could've had coffee.
All right.
You don't need coffee. Good God.
All right, with that, we have nothing else meaningful, obviously, to come aboard this board. So with that, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.